Okay, we'll call this meeting the order of Blackout County Board of Supervisors, May 14th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Layland.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Chalka.
Here.
White.
Here.
Little.
Here. Would you please join us in a moment of silence? Can you join us in pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item one is agenda received, this proposal amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public comments, anybody like to speak to the board that's not an agenda item, please come up to the podium. Seeing none, we'll go to claims and payments, resolution A. Susan?
The county's expenditures this week total $198,712.11, 198712.11. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Resolution B.
There are no claims for country view this week.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, item four, receiving project updates from department heads and/or elected officials. Morning Cathy.
Morning Board. Cathy Nicholas, county engineer. Yesterday, we started paving, construction season started here for us in Blackout County. We started paving on Marquee Road. So this is a county line road on the north portion of the county from Raymond Road over to State Highway 281. The road is closed except for through traffic, residents who live on the road can certainly access the properties. They were doing some preliminary work yesterday, some base leveling today, and then tomorrow the paving will start with the inner layer, which I've told you about in the past. I'll try to get some photos of the next few. We have two projects this summer that are using the inner layer as an asphalt layer, so I can bring photos of that later. And then, secondly, next Wednesday will be our Grundy Road Project Improvement Meeting that will be held at Zion Lutheran Church at 6:30. We did send out letters to residents in the corridor, and we have determined a backup location that will be at the Dyke Community Hall, so we're asking individuals, residents, to call us afternoon on the day of the meeting if it's been raining for two days prior to that. If the road conditions look questionable, please call, and then we will go to the alternate site. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, item five, minutes approved for May 7th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have a couple of hearings today, we'll get to them shortly. One's on a rezone, request from Zion Lutheran Church, and the second one's a bid opening for a crane. Okay, moving on to consent agenda, this will be made with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, item eight is contracts and agreements, this is a resolution, the correction to the three-year contract extension between Blackout County and Cedar Ben Humane Society, effective July 1st, 2019. Through June 30th, 2022, all it was was that a few numbers weren't correct, and they were taken care of, so.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item B, resolution, the lowest reasonable bid for Mott Construction, Southern Iowa, for FY20 Gilbertville Maintenance Building, 5502 South Raymond Road, Gilbertville, cost is $240,000, that was the estimate. The bid was 249.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Athie, anything you want to add to that?
As you know, we did open the bids here in the boardroom last week, we did receive five bids ranging from $362,000 as the high, to the low from Mott Construction for the $249,000. After reviewing Mott's bid, it looks in order, I'm recommending that you accept the bid, and we be allowed to proceed to contract with them.
But no work will start until after July, correct?
Yes, so this is FY20 money, so they cannot start work until July 1st.
Board, any questions? Roll call, please.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item nine, other business, this is a motion of reappointment of Jeff Griffin as a representative for the Blackout County Veteran Affairs, be approved effective July 1st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Jeff, anything you want to say? Come up to the podium, please. This is your second term?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. Currently, I'm the chair of the board, and I just kind of keep the glue together for the commission currently.
Okay.
And we actually start our bets in the park this Thursday, so you're all invited if you want to come down, especially for you veterans, so. Otherwise, yeah, I'm just seeking a second term if you want me, that's great.
Okay, thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Raymond.
Okay, anybody got anything, any questions for Jeff? Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, moving on to item B, this is a motion of personnel requisition for a labor equipment operator, effective May 17th, recommended by Cathy Nicholas. This is a backfill.
Yes, we had a resignation last week of an equipment operator one, so this would be a backfill, wages paid per the union contract.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other questions?
This employee, it's my understanding he left for better pay in the private sector?
Yes, that's what was his desire, to go back to the position he had formerly.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item C is a resolution, the suspension requested by Jan Strangeland on taxes owed for 2018-2019 installment's amount of $3,350.
So moved.
Second.
Rita, this seems like a high number, is this a brand-new one, or has this been on before?
Rita Schmidt, Treasurer, this is a new one. I talked to Tom Eges and Brian Fagley on this individual. She qualified for assistance, and I was not aware of that as far as her disabilities and low income. She does not qualify at this time for the 427.9 with DHS. She's very close, her income's less than $10,000 for a year, and not being aware of it till just now. She was in bankruptcy for a couple of years, it froze, so this is two years of taxes that are now out there, and with her discharge of that bankruptcy, that is now due, and she's not capable of paying that. And so Mr. Eges and Fagley had both expressed that since they could not at DHS, if we could do it here, so she could save her house that she's been living in, so that's what it is. And I have her now on that program for the credit that she has, and so her taxes will greatly lower now that I'm aware that she has this disability.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Do you have a motion on this?
Yes.
Hey, roll call, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Item D is a resolution of the taxes due and payable of the submitted person as indicating special assessments, rates, or charges, including interests, fees, costs, in accordance with provision 427.9, the code of Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item E, this is discussion, possible board action of the county auditor B and his hereby authorized direct to make transfers within the various FY19 operating funds set out and submitted. Susan, I believe this is yours.
Yes. So I sent you a couple of emails about this, but during budget, we discussed changing the way we were budgeting for our capital improvement projects and utilizing our capital projects fund. And basically, the idea is that we would put some reserves into our capital projects fund, and then each year, we would budget a rather flat amount for capital projects, and then the actual items that we spend are likely to fluctuate, but having that reserve in the capital projects fund, and then budgeting for, you know, an even amount every year, depending on what your capital projects, capital improvement plan is, would allow you to keep, you know, a fairly stable, you know, tax rate in regards to that. So we discussed doing that at budget time, we did decide that we would move forward with that, so we budgeted, right now we have approximately $633,000 in the budget for capital projects to come out of the capital improvement fund. And so we discussed at the time that we would transfer some reserves into the capital improvement fund to kind of have a beginning balance. During budget, we kind of discussed a minimum could be $500,000 to transfer into the CIP fund, that was Fund 350, that's the one we use for capital improvements, and then $100,000 into the technology equipment fund, that's Fund 360. We already have some funds in there that are kind of, have been sitting there, kind of earmarked for the tax administration software. And so those were the amounts that we discussed during budget, and then, you know, I'm just opening it up for the board to discuss, you could transfer more, I know during budget you discussed the fact that our reserves, the unassigned general fund reserves, you felt they were a little high, and so transferring those to the capital improvement fund, what you're doing there is saying that instead of having the unassigned reserves over in general fund, you are intending those reserves to be spent on capital projects. So then they would be assigned instead of unassigned, but all you're stating is that that is the intent of those, when you put them in the capital projects fund, is that they're going to be spent on future capital improvement projects.
Is there any type of time commitment? When we put that in there, it's just for our use for multiple years, one year, I mean, whatever.
Right. I mean, it'll be in the capital improvement fund, it'll be assigned for that purpose.
If we were to change our minds at some point in time, too, could it be taken from that account or not? Or it's just that we would have to spend it down? I guess I'm just thinking of some of these questions that, you know, if we put money into that, and we'd utilize it for capital projects.
Right.
So we would probably not change our mind, because we'd have capital projects for all.
Yeah. I believe that you can, that you can decide, you know, you no longer want it intended for capital projects, you could move it back to the general fund. I don't know, Grant, if you have any knowledge of that?
We talked about this a little the other day, and I'm sorry I didn't go back and research it in the code, but I think there are some restrictions on transferring funds into the general fund, but, you know, I'm sorry, I didn't look further into that, and I'd want to do that.
Sure.
But.
Is this, any of this a direct result of what the state legislator did as far as our budgeting process next year, or this has no bearing whatsoever on it?
Well, what is the legislation on the fund balance? I don't remember exactly.
They took out the language about the fund balance that was originally in there, but I think it's just the fact that they did pass that legislation, which puts limits on how much you can budget year to year without taking extraordinary measures, I think indicates that you should take some prudent steps to, you know, safeguard the funds that you have, and not spend down your reserves too quickly, because you're going to be in situations where you'll find that if you want to go above that 2% growth limit, and have to have a supermajority vote to accomplish that, you might find it expedient, if you don't have full board approval for that, to have some reserves for those types of situations. So I think moving funds so that you can show them as a sign for use in capital improvement, and you know you're going to have capital improvement plans, you know, perpetually, I think it's a good idea, what Susan's recommending.
So I know we talked a lot about this at budget time, and so I'm just, is your recommendation $500,000 for the capital improvements fund and $100,000 for the technology fund?
That would be, I think, a minimum of what I would start with. You know, unfortunately, we haven't started on developing that countywide five-year capital improvement plan yet, and so it's hard to say without knowing what kind of projects you're going to have in the next, you know, in the next five years, what you think that level should be. You can always do the minimum now, and then, you know, once you get a plan developed, you can see, do you think you need a little more? You know, depending on how much you're able to budget for each year, so.
So you could put funding into that account at any time?
Right.
Not just during budget, we could do that.
Right. With an action like this, you can transfer some of those unassigned general fund reserves into the capital projects fund at any time, and then say they're assigned for capital projects.
Right, and I know you had said that was the minimum, and then you talked about the $1 million to CIP, obviously thinking, I'm sure, like, we'd have $1 million worth of projects in multiple years, or a year, or something, too, depending on disasters or whatever.
Well, and the only other thought on that is, you know, when they did this current legislation, they did talk about, you know, they took it out, but they talked about limiting your unassigned fund balance to 25%. And right now, we're at 38% in our unassigned. And so, you know, there was some discussion here about using some of that during budget to reduce, basically, you know, offset some of our operating expenditures and reduce taxes, which I think is not the right move, only because then in the following year, you know, those operating expenditures are still going to be there, you're going to have to then raise taxes. So maybe a more, I guess prudent move would be to assign some of those reserves to capital projects, because you know, in the future, you're always going to have some capital improvement projects that you will need to do, and it just depends on, you know, your plan and how much you need for capital projects, but, so having those assigned just shows, you know, that those are intended for a specific use.
And also, by being unassigned, and I might be wrong on this, too, is kind of puts that funding in board control, a little more control from the board's perspective, I guess, for projects, too?
So, right, under the capital projects fund, those funds are appropriated under the board general supervision department, so right now, you know, in the past, when we were budgeting our capital projects in the general fund, they would just be under the department that whoever was managing that project, whether it was maintenance or IT, or the chair, whichever department had those capital projects, and so they were appropriated under those departments. And then if there's, you know, if they come in under budget, or there's funds remaining, those departments, you know, have those appropriations. So in the capital projects fund, it's appropriated under the board, so if there are, you know, funds remaining, then those are under board control to decide how to, what to do with those funds.
Thank you.
I made this email to you yesterday, I'd rather wait till after we hire a new finance person, or we make these decisions, number one. Number two, I'm kind of lyric, I don't think we just discussed it, we didn't come to any consensus or anything on this, so I don't know if Tom, or if we could legally do it, you know, since we didn't have a hearing on it.
I'm not sure what you mean, a hearing on it.
On the funds you want to transfer, anything else we do, we have to have hearings on to do this kind of stuff, you know?
This would just take a board resolution to transfer funds from the...
I talked to Pete yesterday, my concern was a large, a dollar amount, pretty similar to a budget amendment, or even a budget, that this really didn't require a public hearing. So the citizens, there's a reason for a public hearing, and we're talking about quite a bit of money, so I don't know if Pete wants to weigh in on that or not.
I think there's some wisdom in having a public hearing here. I don't think it interferes with your decision-making here, but I think you get input from the public on a large sum of money, and I just, I don't think you're in any kind of hurry at all at this matter, so I don't see anything wrong with a public hearing, I think there's some benefits to it.
So are you saying, Pete, rather than the maximum, or where she was recommending the $1 million, maybe to do the minimum?
Well...
I say the whole works.
Why don't you wait and have a hearing and decide at that time what the amount that you want to use, rather than using that figure right today, making the decision right today? Leave yourself some options there.
Yeah, we didn't save this money overnight, you know, it's...
Well, it's not to use it, it's to put it into a fund to save it for projects.
I know, I know what it's for, but, you know, we're going to have a new leader, you know, for this department, so they ought to have a say in some of the two, I think, I feel.
I think for transparency, I think the public hearing is a good idea, really. Again, there's no hurry, we could have done this at budget if we wanted to, so I think we ought to just set up a public hearing date and go from there.
I'd like to see that date set, so that it's not lingering.
Well, we can have Dana put the notice next week, and then once it goes on paper, so you're probably looking realistically at two weeks, maybe three at the most. But it's not like we're delaying it for a long, long time.
Well, Craig mentioned waiting till we had a finance director, and I think, I guess, because this is our budget, they go by the direction that the board gives, though.
Yeah, right. But see, again, that's some of the things you can discuss in the public hearing, whether you want to take action that day, or so forth, so I think that'd be the best route to go.
I'd say, I thought we had pretty extensive talks about this during the budget process, and this was the direction we were heading, but it was pretty open discussions.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing on that, Chris, I'm just thinking, this large amount of money, I think, really requires a public hearing, or should have a public hearing.
But we're not spending it. I guess I'm curious as to why it requires a public hearing, since we did talk about it at budget, and I think the comment was about some of those things that we proposed as far as the capital improvement plan, and strategic planning, and looking out for a vision for five years, and understanding all of the projects that we have.
And this is all going to happen, I'm not disagreeing with you one bit, but I guess the question, you want to be transparent with the taxpayers, when we do something, public hearing's the way to go. We're laying it right out there, and it's not like we got an emergency situation that we have to take care of this today. Set the public hearing, have the public hearing, then the board can decide how much, if any, or increase it, whatever, and I think it just looks better that way when you go through a public hearing.
Well, I think we've been very transparent during the budget.
Well, I'm not saying that either.
And we're putting into like a savings account for capital projects.
I understand that.
I guess we're not asking the public, telling them we're going to go out and spend your money.
I understand that.
Well, so...
But you heard what Pete said, so either...
He thinks it's open and more transparent, but it obviously doesn't sound like it's the only way to do it.
It's up to the board. It was my suggestion that we have a public hearing, especially when there's no hurry, it's not an emergency situation.
Well, we should have done it during budget, probably.
Yeah, we should have.
Shouldn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
I think we all agreed, because we had those long sessions, and we were running out of time, we needed to approve the budget and make plans to go forward, and this was some of the stuff we said we'd go forward with. I think, I will say this, it's unfortunate, Susan tried to do this in March, and say, can we get these things done, here's what the board wanted to do, and move forward with it, and we put it off until May, and said we'd have those discussions in May. I think even the dates in May became an issue, and it was like the March 21st, or May 21st, I'm sorry, was the date for us to do that, and now we have an opportunity here to kind of do some of this, I guess, before Susan leaves, and all of us knowledgeable of what happened and transpired, and we certainly don't want to move forward with the legislation that we saw happen this last year, and them trying to mess with local control and home rule, and taking things out of our hands. This was an opportunity to say, hey, we've got designated funds that we've put aside for...
And we're going to do that, we're just going to do a different route and go through a public hearing.
Well, I don't know if we will, I guess we'll see what the board votes.
Okay.
Maybe the board would vote.
Up to the board.
Well, I meant, maybe the board wouldn't approve it later in the hearing, I don't know.
Yeah, it's possible.
Sounds like it's, maybe not certain.
Anybody else get any thoughts?
If we're going to have a public hearing, I'd like to set the date, say June 4th, and again, I'd like to hear from Pete. You're advising us to proceed with prudence, could I get your reasoning again?
Well, I think that because of the amount of funds involved here, you eliminate objections to the transfer of these funds. I don't think you're required to do that, I think you voted today, and you had a resolution today authorizing this, you could do it today. But I think that it is prudent to have a public hearing on this, invite public input, who knows whether or not the public will want to come, and that's what they may. And then you make a decision at that time, on the date of that hearing, or at some point, future point, that you decide on how much money you want to transfer, and when you want to do it. I just think it's an option that's open to you, I don't think that you're compelled to do it.
And like I say, I don't want to see it linger, so I would like to see us have it June 4th, and I was interested to get our presentation today on the gravel roads, because that may have an impact on my decision on the dollar amount that we allocate for this, it may or may not, but...
Yes, I would request, I'll be calling into that meeting, but I'd rather be here in person for that discussion.
I'm not sure what date it is, Dan, if it's on next Tuesday, the 21st, to give notice, she probably wouldn't get it published until Thursday or Friday that week.
Do you want, you can do this as a budget amendment in FY20, you could, maybe that would be the best way to do it, and then I can talk to the auditor's office to see if there's anything else that might need to be included right away, if you want to do it in June or July, and then, otherwise you could just have the transfer on there.
That June 4th, you're gone that day, Chris?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll be gone that day as well, I'd like to be here for the meeting, too. Yeah, a week later, and I...
That's fine.
I'm going to be on vacation May 28th, so I'm going to be calling in, on the 28th, so. And this is a pretty significant issue, I'd rather be here personally for this discussion as well.
We can do that. Okay, I don't think we need to take any action on setting the date, Dana will just have to have that on the future agenda, which will be next Tuesday, I believe, and...
To get it done as soon as possible.
I'll have her have discussion with boards and make sure that Chris is gone, so she knows how to publish it and set it up, okay?
Sounds good.
That work?
Yep.
Okay, then, moving on to discussion, this is endorsing a moratorium on factory farm operations. Chris, I believe you put this on.
Yeah, it was, you know, we've all been approached by a number of constituents for the last couple of weeks, just concerned about the lack of local control over the placement of factory farms, and particularly these confined animal feeding lots. Those of us, I don't think we've been through a master matrix yet with Dana, but we've been through it, and... we've been through it, and a couple of times since I've been up here, and we know that that process is just a joke. We can go through, we can go visit the sites, we can check market and score it, and it doesn't matter what we tell the DNR, they don't care, they're going to approve it if they want to approve it, and they're going to deny it probably hardly ever. And so, what we're, you know, looking at is, I think there's been 22 counties across the state that have passed a topical resolution calling on the state to issue a moratorium until we, you know, reexamine the master matrix and put more local control into this. I know, I work a lot on, on water quality issues of the watershed management authorities that I serve on, and this is right there at the top of the issue of what, what's causing pollution in our streams, and it's not, it's not the family farms that, that we all know and love, it's this, this big, kind of corporate operations that, that just put thousands and thousands of animals in small spaces, and so, I, so I put this on the agenda so that, that folks could come and discuss it with us, I think there's a number of folks in the audience that would like to say something, too.
We'll get to them shortly. Obviously, if 22 counties done it, it must be legal, frankly, I'm surprised that we can override the DNR.
Well, it, it's just a topical resolution, it's just a position statement, so we...
Oh, okay.
We, we still have no control over...
Because they usually do what they're going to do, and we don't have any say so in it, so...
This is just part of a, part of a, you know, campaign to kind of raise awareness, and in a lot of the messages we got, I think there was some confusion, too, and I was sure to respond back to people, saying, hey, like, I support this resolution, but just be aware, like, we still don't have local control after passing this, this is just, just a position of, of the county and those 22 other counties.
That makes sense, Pete?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Board, anybody else got anything to say before we open it up to the public?
Oh, yeah, oh, I'll have some questions maybe after, some discussion after, if that's all right.
Okay, come up to the podium, state your name, address.
Sure. Good morning, I'm Margaret Whiting, and I live in 1974 Charis, here in Waterloo. First, I'm just going to briefly say something about what you just said, it's 97% of the master matrix applications are approved, and, and they're, they only have to get like 50% of the marks, you know, on them, so it's, it's a very, it's not a very good system, it really hasn't worked for Iowa, and it is true that this moratorium on CAFO resolution isn't binding, but if we add, if we have more counties say that, you know, we're, enough is enough, that we need to have more pressure on the legislators, so that the action really has to happen in, in the state legislature, but we hope that you will, would join other counties in trying to make this happen. So Iowa's water quality gets worse every year, and I know you've all looked at this impaired water bodies list, and it's terrible that all over the, the state of Iowa, our water quality is getting worse every year instead of better, and it, it's bad enough that we're polluting our own rivers, but Iowans should also be ashamed that Iowa is the second largest contributor of nitrates in the dead zone in the Gulf of Mexico. And a big part of the pollution problem is the confined animal feeding operations, or CAFOs, that spill manure into our rivers, and then farmers apply too much manure to the land, because they have contracts with the, the CAFOs, and, and that, they spread so much that the land can't absorb the, all that manure, so then it, when it rains, it, you know, flows into our rivers, and there we have the high nitrates, high bacterial levels, high hormones and antibiotics in our water, and we have these algae blooms, which don't let the fish get the oxygen they, they need, and then we have fish dying in large numbers, and we have to close our public beaches, and tell people that it's not safe to eat the fish if they fish out of these waters. Des Moines, Iowa has the largest nitrate removal system on planet Earth, but other Iowa cities are also struggling with these nitrates in their water, but these cities don't have them funds to, to buy this expensive nitrate removal equipment, so it's a big problem for cities all over Iowa. Private wells are tested, and we have, all over the state, we have larger levels of nitrates and the bacteria that are showing up in these private wells, and also in Waterloo, at the Gates City Well, the nitrate levels are like 9.7, 9.9, they're, they're right up above, right near the level, the maximum is 10, and so they're, will have to be shut down, so even here in town, we have a problem with nitrates in our water. There's, it's a problem all over the state, I'm just going to show you three articles from the Waterloo Courier from just the last couple of months. Demand for CAFO regulations increases, water quality worsens, but funds drop, more money needed to clean up Iowa's water quality. So the Waterloo Courier is reporting on this as an, as an all media across Iowa, so it's a big problem. I have 75 people in Blackhawk County citizens who have signed this moratorium on factory farm petition, and I'll give you the, I'll hand you these, and, oh, I'm going to read what it says. Factory farms are out of control in Iowa, and the industry continues to expand at an alarming rate, state leaders need to put people and planet before corporate profits, politics, and polluters. So I'm going to hand you all this, and thank you for listening.
Can you grant the petition, please? How many people here are in favor of endorsing the, would you please raise your hands? Okay, we got two more. Is there anybody else, as long as you got some new information, come up to the podium?
I just want to add a little something. I'm Renata Zach, I live at 414 Sunset Road, and we discussed all this before with you, and you know many, many details about it, but I just wanted to make you aware that when the matrix was formulated, the people who did that had no idea what they actually had to govern, and to what extent that has grown, they had no imagination that would come to this. So the matrix was never written with the exact facts included, to adhere to, or to, to safeguard for, or whatever, so it's high time to have a new matrix, and in order to do that, we should have a moratorium, so there's time to deliberate about it, and not have more expansions going on. For example, last summer, or summer and a half ago, they found all of a sudden by drones that there were 500 CAFOs, they were never even asked for permission, or were registered, or nothing. So the whole issue of this huge, huge industry is not good, and it's very, very bad for Iowa, very bad for our water, very bad for other places, like the Gulf of Mexico and Louisiana, it's terrible, and it's not necessary, and most of the money made through this business goes to people who are not Iowans, or not living here, or anything. So we should try to influence going back to a more old fashioned way of farming, we have to change our whole farming premise, and practices, and ideas, and philosophies, because it can't go on this way. Environment will not tolerate it, and we'll all be dead in a few years if we don't do something about that. So thank you so much for listening, and thank you for bringing it up, and thank you for considering it further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, do we know how many new ones have been created in Blackhawk County in the last two years?
I think there's been two since I've been on the board.
Two?
Yeah.
I think there's like five.
One was an expansion of one, and I think maybe one was a, a brand new one. I scored up one of them, and it was, the thing that amazed me is that you get, you can run up the points on this master, master matrix things by, you know, having a longer driveway, having, you know, it's set back so far from the road, nothing that deals with water quality, or, or safety, and that kind of stuff, but, fortunately, I don't think we have as high of a concentration as most other counties do, just because we have more waterways than more counties do, and it's a more urban populated county than most places, but, it's, but what happens in other counties impacts our water, too, that we're, we're trying to drink.
So the groups that have been working on it, then, have been doing it more so to strengthen the master matrix, but also give more local control...
Right.
...to, to that as well, so I was going to say, so there are other options, I'm sure they've got very detailed information on the matrix.
Yeah, I know, a former state rep, who I think is a supervisor now, Coons, in Floyd County, he's been a big advocate, and has proposed a lot of different solutions to it, none of which have caught on yet, but, but he's, he's got a lot of the smart ideas out there.
And these are all still involving the DNR, I'm assuming, we weren't trying to...
Mm-hmm. Right, but I think it would, I think ultimately, the, to me, the goal would be, and there's a lot of, a lot of debate that the, that the final decision would come locally on this, and I think that's, you know, I think anytime, I think for many, many aspects of public policy, especially about what's going to go in your neighborhoods and stuff, those decisions should be made locally.
Yeah, unfortunately, the state doesn't seem to...
No, we haven't been that direction in a while.
Okay, then, so this is just discussion item today, and we'll have a supervisor, if they choose to, put it on for probably next week, would be my guess, for a resolution.
That's what, I emailed a sample resolution out, and so if there's anything, just in the course of this week, that you see that you want out, or that you want in, just let me know.
Did Pete get a copy of that?
I think I sent, Pete, I'll double check that.
Okay. Is that all right, Board?
Yes.
Good?
Thank you.
You bet, thank you. Okay, then, moving on to item G, it is 942, this is a proposal ordinance 77-227. Seth, I guess the first item is a motion received, placed on file.
Move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion away of the first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received and placed on file.
Second.
Are there any written comments?
No, sir.
Okay, Seth, up to you.
Okay. All right, the Planning and Zoning Commission, in its regular meeting on April 16th, 2019, reviewed the request by Zion Evangelical Lutheran Church of La Porte City, Iowa, to rezone 1.05 acres from a agricultural district to a agricultural limited district to allow for the construction of a parking lot at south of 8005 Jessup Road, which is 100 feet south of the Jessup Road and Jubilee Road intersection. The, the request to rezone 1.05 acres from agricultural district to agricultural limited district in order to construct the parking lot for Evangelical Lutheran Church, it was moved by Wards and seconded by Pheasant Meyer to approve the request to rezone 1.05 acres from a agricultural district to a agricultural limited district, in order to allow for a parking lot for Zion Evangelical Church. The area is not in the flood plain, the proposed rezone area is currently zoned, the agricultural district, and consists of vacant land, the surrounding area consists of trees, vacant land, rural homes, farmland, and churches, surrounding area is zoned, a agricultural district to the south, east and west, and agricultural limited to the north. The site had a land evaluation score of 87, at least a score of 238. The applicant is just proposing a rezone, 1.45 acres, in order to construct a new parking lot. The proposed rezone area is not located within Blackhawk County Water Airport, Waterloo Airport, used and height overlay area. Brian Shown with Intercoag responded through a phone call, noted the high Leesa score for the property, Brandon indicated that the applicant will need to contact Black County Engineering's office for permission if they plan on installing a new driveway off of Jessup Road. So basically, we just have, just one, one acre, this lane was donated by someone that's affiliated with the church, and if it, basically just rezoning it to ag limited, so that the church and the parking lot are properly zoned for their use.
Was there any opposition?
Oh, no opposition. In fact, we had probably, I think we had five people that were very pro, and I guess you had the, the church, I mean, it's a small little church, but it, it has about 70, you know, 50, 70 members that, that attend services each week, and I'm guessing with the minimum parking that they have, that a lot of them are just parking on the road, so this would be a great, great addition for the church.
So the parking lot would be better in the church?
Yes, but, and my guess is they're probably not going to use the whole acre and a half for parking area, they'll probably just lay gravel down a part of it, so...
Okay. Board, any questions? Anything else, Seth?
Well, that's, that's about it for that one.
Okay, I do have a motion to close the hearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four is a resolution to suspend the rules, so...
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Item five is adopting the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Any questions?
Nope.
Roll call.
Felka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Okay. Item, item H is a resolution minor plat of survey for the church, let's see, 8005 Jessup Road, okay.
Second.
And it's all we're doing here again, is the minor plat.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just be brief, since we already discussed pretty much everything for the rezone, yeah, there, this is just simply just plating that area off, to remove it from, from the, the main parcel, and, you know, basically so that it, you know, become, become part of the church, so, and basically, yeah, it was moved by Wards and seconded by Pheasant Meyer to approve the request to plat 1.05 acres to allow for the construction of the parking lot, Zion Evangelical Lutheran Church, and then the motion to approve carried unanimously on that as well.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Felka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item Y, this is a hearing, it's 946, this is on the purchase of an 80-ton crane.
Motion received and placed on file, proof of publication.
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received.
Second.
Any written comments?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's seconded that?
I did.
Thanks, sir.
Motion carries. And item three, bids to be received, open and read, the deadline was 3:00 PM on Monday, May 13th, did they meet it?
Thank you.
Yes, they did.
Okay, and it looks like you've got one, two, three, four, and the estimate is $400,000?
Correct.
Is this FY20 money, or '19?
FY20 money, so we will not be purchasing it until July 1st, and we did just receive one bid.
You got four bids out there?
Aye. Well, we sent out four.
And we got one?
Right, we sent four proposals and got one bid.
They only had, did any of the other ones have used ones, or they, they didn't have any used ones, is that why they didn't bid?
Correct.
Were you aware of this used one before you went through the process?
Yes, we have been looking for, for several months now, we came up with the, three pages of specifications, and then that was...
But I mean, this particular one here, have you already located this prior to even doing anything?
Yes.
So, and we also have a new one in for next year, don't we? Don't we have a new one in, too?
No, we cannot afford a new one. We've, we opted to go, currently, we have two cranes, we will...
Get rid of one.
Be disposing of one, probably later this year, we'll keep the other one in that, and we can only afford to purchase a used one, a good used one, what we're hoping. Okay, this bid comes from Cleveland Crane and Shovel Sales Incorporated, Bedford Heights, Ohio, it's for a 2008 Manitowoc, 8,000, 80-ton crawler crane, delivered to Waterloo, Iowa, $375,000, 375,000, 000.00.
And this is budgeted money for FY20?
Correct.
So are cranes like measured by like hours of use, or something?
Yes, there's hour meters on, on the heavy equipment.
Is there any guarantee with this?
We, we asked, there's information about that, and the proposal, we'll have to look at that, we can tell you more about that...
All right, when you come back.
Later this week.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Nina... Okay, need a motion to review and place on file?
So moved, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're going to go into a work session right now, it's discussion, not sure what action would be taken. But anyways, I'm, county gravel road conditions. Why was that put on there for action, somebody? Kathy, why was that put on there for action, or we, we're not taking any action, are we today?
Not necessarily.
I think we're done, everyone, I think everyone has a copy. Okay, good morning again, Board.
Good morning.
We, yes, we're here to talk about the status of the gravel road, roads and their conditions this, uh, and how they've developed this past, um, winter and spring. Put together a short, uh, PowerPoint, I think you all have copies of that, if you would like electronic copy of it, I can certainly email you that as well. This is just a brief, very brief summary of what I'd like to talk about this morning. Just a very brief overview of the gravel road system. Most of you already know this, we do have five hundred miles of gravel roads in Blackhawk County. It's very average for an Iowa county that, we have virtually, uh, a mile grid system here in Blackhawk County to, for agricultural purposes. Um, the gravel roads were built over a hundred years ago and primarily built right along the section lines. I, I wasn't here then, so, but we surmise that, that they machinery came in and, uh, took material out of the ditch, the future ditch, and then cast it up onto those section lines, and then, at some point later, gravel was placed on top of that. And then we've been adding gravel ever since then to maintain these roads. When they were, the idea was, when they were conceived, there, there was no drainage associated with any of these gravel roads. So it is very common, as you travel throughout Iowa, that none of the gravel roads have drainage features, any subdraining or any, um, linear type of drainage to take the water away from the roadway. And of course, none of the roads were built for today's heavy agricultural loads. Uh, when the roads were built, you know, you can imagine some of the more simpler tractors that were out there. Simpler farm machinery that weighed a lot less than it does today. So I wanted Dr. Sherman Lundey to come and talk to you about the, why the roads are so bad, some of the geology of the roads here in Blackhawk County. Uh, he's an, an expert in geology, as obviously he's worked for BMC for many years, he, he's going to tell you a little bit about how and why the roads are in such, um, poor condition this spring.
Sherman, got anything to do with frost?
There are other things to lay words to describe what I encountered, which is inappropriate for this group. A little bit of, a little bit of lesson over here, I'm not trying to insult anybody's intelligence, okay? We're going to walk through some things, uh, to add a little bit of what Kathy said. Talk to you a little bit about what the gravel roads are, all right? Essentially, when they, um, put these things together, the idea of gravel was the river, so-called river gravel. You know what I'm talking about, you go out to sand plant over there and you get river gravel. That's because river gravel was a very common material throughout the county, all right? Uh, and in fact, that's one of the ways you paid your poll tax, if you lived out of the county, you were a county resident, there was a poll tax, by the way, in Blackhawk County. You paid your poll tax by going out and you put, dug up the gravel road, and they brought you a load of gravel, and you spread it out, that's the rounded cobble stuff over there. Essentially building on what Kathy said, when they put these things together, they're on section lines or half-section lines, the only time that varied was when they encountered a creek. If you encountered a creek that was on the section line, you didn't, what you could to get around it. You ever been out to scout camp out in Amawas, you'll notice when you drive around over there, that's fine, because the creek across the creeks very well. And you need to understand a little bit about that, about the road materials. Later on, one of the hard things that happened is you ran out of a lot of the cobbley-sized material, uh, what we would call river gravel, not, not as common. And that's why you see a lot of these little pockets around over there where people had this stuff on their barns, et cetera, there's a reason for that. So what happened is then, uh, by the teens and twenties over here, one of the things we were able to do was to utilize crush lines, so. So, rather than correcting the ground, now they comes into one of our establishments and say, I want to buy some gravel, instead of removing an exclamation, this time a crush line, so we call it gravel, solves a lot of problems. So that's the material that's placed over there now. Uh, there was no concept of macadam, is that what I'm talking about when I say macadam? I'm like stairs, all right? Uh, macadam was, uh, actually a scotch, and he built his roads based on the Old Roman scenario where you put heavier materials on the bottom, and you built a simple lighter materials or smaller sized diameter materials, this way you got a good packing, et cetera, over there. So there's very little concept of macadam, it was just a matter of putting gravel on the road so that you could pack it back and forth and that sort of thing. The difficulty is complex, and this is kind of what called frost action, one-on-one scenario. But, you know, a lot of factors are involved in terms of the road scenario, but they're facing. Then if the county engineer everywhere have inherited a hundred-year-old problem, and you're not going to correct the old man and do a grand building right? So. All right, sorry. It's, it's no professorial problem, I wander around when I talk, so. We won't go any further than that, but to the extent that, uh, one of the things that you need to keep on, among the many things you need to keep in mind is, you're dealing with a lot of factors, we'll pull, I'm going to give you some threads, then we'll tie the threads together, all right? We've got a map over here, and this map is available from the Iowa Geological Survey, it's called the Surficial Geology of Blackhawk County. Now, uh, what we're talking about over here is the surface over there, that is to say the immediate surface, as you look out on it, the landscape surface, as opposed to the subsurface which, uh, would be the underlying rock layers, the limestones, et cetera, et cetera, all right? What you have over here are a variety of surfaces, and we're going to wander away, shout them aloud. This is the Cedar River watershed, and Chris knows a little bit about this because we just had a meeting here last week, we're in the middle, Cedar, part of the sub-surface. This is the Cedar River watershed over, this is a floodplain area over here, all right? Upland over here, we have a little different environment, and over here is the Wopsipendicon area. So what that means is, the subsurface over here, over which these gravel roads are built, is a lot different. The floodplain materials over here are going to be silt and sand materials over here, all right? It'll be silt, sand with a little clay. The upland areas over here are largely till, glacial till. And what glacial till is simply, when the glacial ice melted over here, it dropped all of this stuff in place, all right? So you've got a variety of materials, there's boulders, there's cobbles, there's clay-like materials. And back over here again with this drainage system, the Wopsipendicon area, with a very similar scenario that you have over here. So what this means is, when they built these roads, they built these roads on top of the gravel roads, on top of a variety of different materials. Now, none of these roads, as Kathy pointed out, were ever designed, gravel roads were ever designed for drainage. So what this means underneath here is that you've got a subsurface over here that's not designed to drain very much at all. You have a subsurface over here that's designed to do two things, one of them is allow water to move through it, and the size of the particles that are there, there's two terms, one is called velocity, and one is called permeability. Velocity is the size of the openings and the size of the particles. Permeability is the ability of water, in this case, to matriculate through over here. If you get no drainage at all, per se, away from this over here, you have a capacity for storing the water. It's an oversimplification, but that's part of the problem. Now, to add to that, another thread is that our weather patterns have been changing, okay? What that means, of course, is that we had a rainy fall, right? Got a lot more water, the water table came up a little bit. And alluvial soils over here, and alluvial areas, when you've got water moving through there, what most people see is they see a river, and for them, the water's moving in this direction downstream. But keep in mind, water exerts pressure this way, this way, and this way. So the water's moving back through the alluvial materials as well, pushing up that water table over there where a lot of those gravel roads are built. Up here, in the till areas over here, we had what we might call a quasi-normal development. You have the soil sections, another thread. But the soil sections are O, A, B, and C, remember agronomy, maybe we took that some time to pass, the O stands with a thin layer of organic material. A is the black soil, B is that transition zone, C is that clay material that's formed on whatever the original material was that was there, whether it was till, or rock, or whatever, okay, working its way up. Now, what happens over here with all of these varieties of soil types is that road building was consistently build it up, put some rock on it, and that's what you drove on. Now, the difficulty is over here that we have water, and that water's moving down through here, and water table is up a little bit higher. Now, the difficulty with water table, and you've got to understand that, there are a few types of water tables. One is an unconsolidated material, what that means is dirt, clay, sand, whatever that might be. The other concept of an aquifer is in what we would call consolidated material like limestones, dolomite, where we get the bulk of our drinking water, okay? So the water table that we're interested in is the water table that's in the unconsolidated material, because that's also a factor as well. Water's not draining away, not moving away very much per se. Now, to add to this, we add to this problem a complicated scenario with weather conditions. We had a harsh winter, now what that means is, we had a lot of cold, we had a lot of snow, you know the details, right? So the difficulty here is that when you have the cold and the snow over here sitting on top of the ground, on top of the roads, what you have to understand is what's happening to that water over here. Initially, the snow comes over here, and we start to get a freeze in that water, get a little freeze thaw. Now, if you know anything at all about water, when it freezes, it freezes how? Not from the bottom up, but how? From the top down over there. Verify that, take a look at how your ice cubes form, go out and visit George Wyth or someplace like this. So what's going on over here is that water starts to freeze down here, that water starts to freeze. That's what you call that bottom part of that frost area, freeze area down there is the frost line. The longer the snow and the ice are there, what happens is, the water that's circulating through, the water that's circulating down starts to freeze. The longer you have the winter, the more severe the winter is, the deeper the frost line over here. Water as ice has another important characteristic, and we all know this, ice and water are similar materials with an electrical structure because you've got these particles over here, is that when it freezes, the molecular structure causes the ice to expand. So now, when that freezes beneath there, that's expanding in as much as possible. Now, having said that, again, a lot of oversimplification in the interest of time. What happens over here in the springtime is, when this stuff starts to melt over here, the melting occurs where? On the top, right? And so this starts to melt, we got frost connecting as ice particles underneath, so the water sits here. It starts to do what? Defrost, as you were, how? Not from the bottom up, but how? From the top down, it's going top down. As it does this, things begin to form this pudding on top, why? Because you've got frozen mass down here, and you've got this melted material holding all of the soil and other types of materials sitting on the top end. So now, these boils start to occur. And then, what are we starting to do all the time, we're trying to do what? Drive on all of these things, continue to drive on, pushing this material up and down. As this defrost occurs over here, what happens is, that you've got a defrost occurring, the water is moving up. Now, the water moving up through there slowly because of the heat energy has a lot to do with what we call cohesion. These water molecules are pulling up, pulling up, pulling up all the time. And so what's going on over here is, without drainage away from over here, because you don't have any drainage cells to speak of, what you begin to get over here is this unconsolidated material with a mixture of water over here, you're getting a clay-like, pudding-like mixture. Now, when you start to put a rock on top of that sort of thing over here, the rock over here is going to help, but it's not going to be an answer, why? Because of what you've got down below that. The so-called boils over here, what they call the boils, have to do when you drive on them, like so, you're pushing material up. Think of it as pushing a pudding here, pushing down over here, you're pushing the unconsolidated material up. People call up, no matter where you are, gravel roads, I got a boil, it's rough, drive on, it's getting stuck over here, what can I do? Now, the county could go out, and they've got a boil, so what are they going to have to do? Get a pack home, dig the material out, throw some rock in here, that might solve that problem, maybe for right now, but is it going to go away? The answer is no, it's not, that area may consolidate over here for a while. So, and an oversimplification over here, we've got three main issues, four issues, one of them is, the gravel roads not built with drainage. They're built the same way all across the different types of sub-soils that are, that exist over here. The freeze thaw scenario is such over here with a lack of drainage, and the way that material is set as it freezes down to form the surface, and as it melts this way, coming back up again, you're not going to be able to avoid that problem of soft materials. Now, what takes so long for this to happen is, we, see that frost line probably disappears down, should be gone about now, not necessarily, but fairly close. What's happening is that as this water comes up over here, the wind blows across it, takes it away, right? Which might get all to dry out, but keep in mind, you've got cohesion, what's that doing? It's pulling the water up how? Down below, it's pulling it up here like this. If you want to see an example of this, go home, get yourself a bucket of water, take a washcloth, go to the bathroom, put the dry end over here and the wet end over here, come back in three hours, and this drying's going to be wet, that's called cohesion. It's the same thing that's happening out on those roads, that's one of the reasons why they tend to stay wet. Now, are the road bases underneath here all the same? No, that's why some areas don't have a lot of boils, why some areas are better, and why some areas have greater boils than other areas, what you call boils. But keep in mind, that material over there is not going to evaporate all at the same rate. It's inconsistent, but you're pulling up on it down below. Now, having said that, giving you that general information, as I said, in a short amount of time over here, to give you some idea of what they have encountered, and what they have to try to address, we're going to put.
Yeah, I've heard over the years, and even this year, from, uh, individuals, some of them DOT, saying that Blackhawk uses the wrong kind of rock.
As in, what?
I, I have no idea, just saying that, we're using the wrong kind of rock in our gravel roads. roads. I don't know what that means, or...
In terms of, you know, I'm going to clarification, but essentially, you've got two basic types of materials that have fallen around here. The most common thing is limestone. The dolamites are really materials that are not going through a lot of, they're magnesium carbonate. Magnesium carbonate concentration is about eight to nine to 10 percent. That's a reason why we call it a dolomite, but they're really mixtures, dolomite and calcium carbonate, which is limestone. And the stuff that you're using over here, in terms of the kind of material that you're using, you're going to have, and I know there's a big question, gray rock versus the tan rock. That's the first thing we hear, okay? And you've heard it before. But the color is not a big deal. The tan is generally due, the yellow color generally due to limonite, trace of limonite and iron oxide, okay? The gray colored material is not going to have as minimal amount of iron, maybe a little argelaceous material, aluminum oxides over here, which do with the gray color. The big characteristic that you're looking for are two things. One of them is, we call them the freeze thaw characteristics, and the abrasion, or durability over there. Now, the kind of material that's generally going to be better for you to use over here would be, you can get a county road rock material. If you have some questions about it, you can always send that in to request the state to do an analysis on that for the freeze. It's called the sea freeze, water, sea stands for water. Some of the road aggregate that's used as an air freeze, as an alcohol freeze, but that's not going to model what you're doing here. The other thing is an abrasion, an abrasion value. Abrasion's called the Los Angeles abrasion. That's how we test, the rock is tumbled with balls, there's steel bearings, and so forth over there. Generally speaking, good county road rock is going to be close to Class A characteristics. There are two main characteristics. One of them is the sea freeze of up to 15, another one is the abrasion up to about 45 percent, and that's over time under severe conditions. That's generally going to last fairly long over here. A lot of counties use two quarter inch. I know talking with our county officials over here, they've had some concerns, because people driving all the county roads at less than safe speeds, they'll push up three-quarter inch materials, and so that's why there's a preference for one inch over here for you all. But those are some basic characteristics of rock that's going to be durable over there. So it's not the color of the rock that's going to make the big difference over there, it's those physical and chemical characteristics over there. You can do the academy scenario, you can put down material that's bigger in diameter, you can put down the two inch or three inch, but if you do that, then they should get another complaint about driving across that, because that's pretty good sized material. You can drive, put that in the ground, and you can drive across that, and come back and put another level of one inch material. Now, that helps, when it's nice and dry, and it's not too wet, but you come again with heavy rains and so forth, keep in mind that you don't have any drainage, and all you're doing is pushing that material down over there. So I guess, Tom, my question to you would be, you want to look at the physical and chemical properties of that material. That would be something that would be of interest to you. A lot of people have a concern, I put my gravel out there, and it breaks down, it breaks up over there, crumbles over here as well. Yeah. And so, that's going to, your physical characteristics are going to be what's your chemical characteristics. And those should be available for any of the aggregate company. Obviously, I represent one, but any aggregate company, and you can request that, or you can have it privately tested as well. So we do that with some of our material as well.
Thank you, Sheriff.
We do, I do have a few slides at the very end talking about the rock quality and the quarries here in Black Hawk.
I'm sure you've heard that too over the years, Kathy.
Yeah, we get that complaint regularly, especially about a certain location in the county.
Sure.
That they're...
The dressbooks you folks have in mind?
Yeah, that's very good, thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff, I appreciate it.
Really excellent.
Thanks, Sheriff.
I just wanted...
College credit for that.
Yeah.
We're like, we should give you a certificate or something.
Well, when you get through, I'll do my math. By the way, that's something that you should be aware of over there. And it is, it's a R3 by the way, if you were in a very big couple of...
We might have more questions for you at the end.
Okay, I will sit right here.
Yeah. So, these are just some typical photos that we've taken over the last month, six weeks. You, as Dr. Lundey said, it's very pudding-like in some locations. It's varied widely throughout the county this year. Numerous frost heaves, deep ruts. We've tried to keep people informed by Twitter. I think that that has, we have received some good comments on the use of Twitter to notify people. This photo on the left was taken in Morrow Heights, so a residential area. The road looked fine, but apparently it wasn't fine once the trailer went in there and started moving these logs or these tree pieces. So, just all kinds of different vehicles becoming stuck over this past spring.
Hit this stuff real... The other part of this, and I did mention, is another term for you, called a perch water table. What that means is, it looks dry on the surface, and what I told you, it's melting down, so it causes very little drainage, you've got a clay layer, you're going to have a layer of water in there, all right? And on very simple terms over there, let's draw on the surface, why? Because that's where it's evaporated underneath, where that stuff is melting, and there's water there, or ice, or whatever else, or water. That, I didn't mean to interrupt the presentation, but it's like a mini perch water table. What that is, is an artificial water table that's going to be there until the conditions of evaporation move that out of there, the transevaporation, or else that material percolates down into the ground.
Sure. It's also affected our seal coats. The photo on the left was taken in our Morrow Heights subdivision. That's a subdivision that we seal coat on a three to four-year basis. We had heard that an individual ordered some aggregate for their driveway, and the road looked fine, but once the gravel truck drove through there, it pretty much destroyed our seal coat. We are, as you know, we do embargo three or four miles of seal coating many years. Not every year, but this year, we did embargo some roads. We didn't embargo subdivisions, because they need to get garbage pickup, they might need to get propane, et cetera, et cetera. So there are reasons for not doing embargoes on all seal-coated roads. It also, of course, has affected our paved roads. This photo on the right was taken at Dunkerton Road in Shank. We have had a handful of spots pop up over the last year or two that have gotten increasingly bad this winter and spring, that are on our paved route system. We tried to come up with an estimate of how many frost boils there are right now, or this spring, throughout the county, and Wayne, even our maintenance superintendent, estimated that the west side of the county has approximately 60% of all miles have at least one significant frost boil, or frost heave. The east side seem to have a bit fewer, maybe 40%, so we're just averaging half of our miles of gravel have a significant frost boil. Additionally, as you can see in this photo, there are many black spots where it's still relatively flat, but we've got the native material coming back up to the surface. We've lost the crust of gravel on top of the road there. So how does this compare to previous years? Well, the last two winters, 16, 17, and 17 and 18, have been very mild, relatively mild. And Wayne Maintenance says that he could count on his hand how many frost boils there were. So there were about 10 at most, the last few winters, which has been less. Historically, we've averaged about 25 boils. So you can see, here's a few photos taken over the last 10 or 15 years. The bottom photo was in 2016. If you recall, we did have those, the heavy equipment contractor come in who was upgrading the power line in the north portion of the county. We did have some bad spots. We told people to stay off the gravel roads at a certain point that spring, and a lot of that was due to the heavy equipment being on those roads. And then, the top photo was a mortar grader in 2007, so a number of years ago. So we have had a history of frost boils, but nothing like this year. And in talking to other county engineers around Iowa, we're all saying the same thing, that this winter was particularly bad. All right, we want, we put some numbers together for you that show what we've been spending on rock, as far as costs and tonnages. As you know, we have nine greater districts in the county to, we've split up those 500 miles, so that nine greater operators each have a district. Historically, in the summer, we like to rock 20 miles of road every year, so that means approximately on a three-year cycle, every mile is getting re-rocked. Grundy Road is an exception. We've been, the last two to three years, we've been re-rocking that at least once a year. We've been using contract rock haulers to do that, and that's been costing about $30,000 to $40,000 a year. That's one of the reasons we would like to pave Grundy Road, because we're spending so much time and money on Grundy Road, maintaining it. So, prior to this past winter, we, I feel, the gravel roads were in good condition. Maybe there were a few places where they were fair, but we had a good gravel road system last, last fall. So here's the money we've been spending on rock per fiscal year, and as you recall, when the gas tax passed in 2015, in February of 2015, I said that we would like to spend an additional $200,000 more on rock. And you can see that we have been spending more, over the last five years, we have increased our, the money we spend on rock, as well as the amount of rock we've been placing on the gravel road system. So a number of you have asked me what we're going to do about it. How are we going to solve this, the problem with the frost boils? So, starting Monday, our employees, our secondary roads employees, many of them are truck drivers, our mortar grader operators, they're going to start working 10-hour days. We're getting to the point in the year where we feel like, once it stops raining, the roads will start to firm up, we're getting warmer nights, warmer days, the wind is helping to dry out the roads now. We can now start to place spot rock. We've been doing that for the last couple of months, but admittedly, it hasn't been as successful as we'd like. So by spot rock, I mean placing the rock right at a bad location, right where a frost boil is. A place where we need to bridge over the native or the existing material. That usually takes us four to six weeks, and in a normal year, we're mostly done with that by now, or a good part of the way done with that activity. This year, we're, we've just been, like I said, we've been doing small portions of spot rock, but we're hoping that by next week, we can really go at placing spot rock. And then, our guys will be working 10-hour days. We're hoping this, the spot rocking will be done in four to six weeks, and then we can begin placing mild rock, or sooner. And we're hoping that we would be able to achieve, go back to the 20 miles of road, of road rock being placed. Of course, Grundy Road is another, that takes a lot of time. We've been hiring contract truck drivers the last few years. We will most likely do that again this summer, this, in the next few months, to get that rock placed. We only have four truck drivers for our nine mortar graders, so those guys are busy hauling to all those mortar graders throughout the day. A long-term solution may be for us to hire another truck driver. Once we get Grundy Road paved, we are going to need another person in a snow plow, a truck plow, and that, since Grundy Road will be kind of isolated by itself, we don't have a close truck route. So another person would allow us to split up two districts that have 70, 60 to 70 miles Okay, so for fiscal year 19, we have approximately, so this is what we have about today, with today's numbers, we have approximately $235,000 left in the rock item, $167,000 left in the labor budget, for a total of about $400,000. We've forecasted now that we're going to continue to place rock and work, that we're going to be, we will overspend the rock portion of that by $175,000 by the end of June. And if we go to this, this four weeks of 10-hour days, that's going to be an additional $82,000. And we've talked with Susan about the amendment, and that's one of the reasons we want, need to be included in the amendment. Well, this is the very reason we need to be. So obviously, for fiscal year 20, we're not into that money yet. It's totally yet to know the consequences of where that budget's going to look like in a year. A year from now, if we have another bad winter, we may be asking for more money. Today, our, again, today, our current fund balance is about $3.87 million. So we do have a good amount of cushion right now. And if things, if we just have an average winter, I think we'll be fine. Another long-term solution for gravel roads is we can apply additives to the subgrade or to the base of the road itself. We could use additives like fly ash or chloride. If you recall, we did do a chloride treatment on Anspurle last year with mixed, with mixed results. It didn't last as long as we had hoped it would. Admittedly, admittedly, we didn't pay a lot of money, it was more as a pilot project. There is a cost to those, applying those treatments to gravel roads, approximately $50,000 to $100,000 per mile. We could be looking at more options like that on our roads that do have the hog confinement. And then, I just have a couple of slides about rock quality. So like Dr. Lundey said, all of the rock placed in Black Hawk County, the quarry's here, it's limestone or dolomite. The rock that we're buying today to place on the gravel roads is one-inch roadstone, and it does meet Iowa DOT specifications for durability. So it is a good quality aggregate that we're buying to place on the gravel road system. The one problem in that area that we have is, the north or the north-central portion of the county, Dr. Lundey could talk about, their Messley Quarry is currently closed due to water, and they're running out of this aggregate that we need in that portion of the county. So oftentimes, we do have to go to the Neiman Quarry west of Denver, and we have not verified that the rock we're buying from them meets the DOT specifications. The, they do make products that do meet DOT specifications, so we're not sure at this time if that meets DOT specifications, but we've been using it for years. It is the more yellow product. Residents do complain about it, but we're saving money by not having to go out to the Raymond Quarry, or the other quarries in the county. We're going to the closest quarry, so there is some balance there, where we have to look at our labor and equipment costs of trucking the rock. So we are fortunate in this county that we do have good quality aggregate. We, all of the surrounding counties come to the BMC quarries to get rock, because they don't have their quarries in their counties, for example. We have good aggregate quarries, we have good sand plant quarries, so we're fortunate to be located close to those here in Black Hawk County. Do you want to say anything more about the quality of rock, or are there any questions?
I have a question. I was wondering about the boils in the same place every year, will they come back?
You want to answer that?
Not generally. I mean, a lot of times, you do come back in the same exact spot, but we've had several other ones this year that I've never seen boils in those locations before.
All right, one other question. I mean, seeing the expense in tiling, do you ever tile or attempt to tile underneath there to pull the water under the boil?
Generally, we have not. We, and like I said, on, on an average gravel road in Iowa, sometimes we, there's not enough, you know, you need a certain elevation of the road to be above the ditch in order for the tiling to do, to have any benefit. In some cases, we don't have that. We're just not able to do that, we don't have enough fall. We haven't spent the money to tile many of...
I was talking about the future too. I thought if you use a steel tile, which cuts on the pipe, you know what I mean? It would hold up a little gravel, but you would definitely have to go out, run up the water. All right, that was a question I had. I'll go back.
Thank you. Thank you.
I know I had one guy the other day, Kathy said drill a hole down the middle, let the water come up and drain.
So several counties have done that. And again, you have to have enough elevation so that it can drain, and so the water gets away from the bottom of your drain. Because I would think it's also could come back up if you have a water table just sitting there.
He said we could experiment in front of his house.
Well.
I think one thing that was, we had the last slide or a couple of slides ago, actually directly related to the conversation we had earlier about Master Matrix, is that we've got a situation of residents out on these roads that are tearing them up, but these, these large, large semis and large equipment, that's basically leaving their profit, or taking their profit out of state and leaving their pollution here and tearing up our roads. And so it's, and leaving us with, with the problem to fix. And so I, I wonder if there's a way of exploring, you know, embargoes in these situations that, because, I mean, I want a family farmer to be able to get their tractor down, but I don't really care about a hog confinement getting their semis down, quite frankly. And how we would distinguish between the two, if that's even possible, but.
Yes. So if I can just comment on that, we, admittedly, we have heard from a number of individuals, farmers with hog confinements this year. And we do every, most winters, but this year has been very difficult. They are, they do have numerous trucks that have to come and go from their facilities every day for the feeding, the waste removal, those types of things, that we have not stopped that. I, I don't want, I have not been given any other direction. I don't want to, these animals to die because they can't be fed, for example. So we, I tell the residents that, that is, we have no moratorium on, we have no, do not stop anyone from traveling on the gravel roads unless it's just completely impassable, then we would place a few road closed signs. But again, it's travel at your own risk at that point.
I think unfortunately, Chris, we'd get in trouble there, especially if they gain get to their business.
You mentioned Kathy about using that quarry, the Neiman Quarry, and for a cost-benefit factor, actually, because of the time and, and the immediate access to that. Is there a large, you said it's a small amount, though, and so it's not really anything consequential to?
As far as quantity of rock this comes-
Yeah, or quality when we looked at, yeah.
We do pull a lot of rock out of there.
Oh.
And to go to another quarry, like if we go up to the Denver Quarry, you know, we may be hauling two miles away from there. And so to not go to that quarry and have to go clear to Raymond or Morgan Quarry, it would just take us twice as long than we would get the rock haul, if we need to get out.
Sure. I just thought, the, the quality of it's probably not such a substandard. I would think that it would be that detrimental.
That's what we're, I believe, because like I said, we do get, they do make other products out of that quarry that they have been told us do meet DOT specifications. So if it's, if it's basically the same material, it's just crushed to a different size, it probably meets DOT specifications, but we haven't verified that.
Haven't been able to verify it.
The other part of this is, without complicating this situation, it depends on the formation from which the rock is taken as well. So up at the Neiman Quarry, for an example, we've got a part of it, so Solomond Bow Herm with the rapid, a little bit of the Solon up there. Actually, the Solon, rapid and the Solon over there. And other places, the rock characteristics in terms of the positional environments weren't always the same. So as an example, our Raymond Quarry, a lot of rock comes out of the Corville Formation, which is parallel to the Corville Formation down in Iowa City. But the rock depositional environments were different over there. Hence, the rock forming characteristics, the lithification was different. So that's one of the big issues with some of this material. We're taking material out of the rapid in the floor, the Raymond Quarry, that's as hard as durable, as durable as any of the material you'll find around. Yet you can go some other places where the rapid rock, that's the name of the formation, is very shaly and crumbly over there. The other part, the gentleman asked about boils in the same place. Well, keep in mind that you're familiar with things like the black gumbo till, you've heard about that, the glacial till. Well, that, a lot of that depends upon the twice the seen glacial advances, which were several over here over the last two or three, four, eight years. And then the alteration of the surface that has occurred since that time, hence, the problem is that you're going to encounter different conditions at underlayment over here. You may dig down seven or eight feet over here, and you're going to hit a gumbo till, the black gumbo till. You may have different kinds of underlayment materials. That stuff that they can't know when they're dealing with just the surface over there. And to try to put drainage over there, keep in mind, just to point out a comment, we're redoing twenty out here. Look at the effort that's gone in. We're digging that out, putting in a subbase of material over here, they're called subbase materials. It's two to three feet deep over here, plus the drainage, and then we surface that material. Even that withers out of there. And our county road system, if you were to go back and try to do that, and I'm, you know, I'm all for that, and we sell the rock. But to go back and try to do that over there, you're talking about millions of dollars to go back and try to put those roads on a category that these other roads over here, the state highways and the interstates are. That's one of the problems over here that you're dealing with. So I'm not trying to lessen the problem, but simply to point out, you're going to have this situation with gravel roads over here. If you go back and try to repave some of them, you've got to go back and put in those systems over here that accommodate the more modern types of traffic that drive on those roads. Don't want to talk to the choir or lectury, but those are some conditions they've got to deal with every day and many times a residence in the county. I know, many years, for thirty years, we lived out in the county, and I understand some of those frustrations, et cetera. But that's part of the problem, and that's one of the trade-offs.
So we are trying to work with the materials we have available and stay within budget. And we don't, we don't really see any, we're not going to be making any major changes in, in what we've been doing over historically here at the county to take care of the gravel roads this summer, to improve them this coming year. We do, we could use some big help from Mother Nature to just stop raining. And once, once it does stop raining, I think we'll, you know, we know what to do. We'll have the roads in as good a condition as we can by fall, and we're just hopeful that we have a, we go back to another mild winter.
You're not the only county, so it's, it's definitely due to the winter that we've had, and time will tell whether that's the dorm here on out or not. But just have to take it one year at a time is all you can do.
Do you plan on requesting the additional truck operator in this next budget session, or?
Uh, I guess I haven't, we haven't, I haven't completely made up my mind yet. Obviously, for FY twenty, that's, it's too late. Like I did say, one, once we get Grundy Road paved, we will have that, that five miles of, of pavement that needs to be plowed by a truck, and we have no other surrounding routes to plow with a truck over there. And we do have two large districts that would be, or one large district, excuse me, that we could split up if we were to be given another FTE for a truck driver. Do you want to add anything, Wayne?
Uh, no, I want to say a question.
You mentioned your drivers that were going to be going to ten-hour shifts.
Right.
And that's till fall, or?
I'm hoping four to six weeks, so we can at least get the spots covered up and get started on our mild rock, because we really need to get going on.
And I'm assuming some of those roads have improved. We haven't got nearly the calls in the last couple of weeks, maybe.
They're slowly improving, but, you know, last week, we had that rain for a couple of days, and it really messed the roads up again. So, you know, it's, sometimes it's one step, or one step forward, two steps back at this point.
As, as far as driving, like-
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You say you hope to have things in good order by the fall. I live on a gravel stretch, and I pay for oiling, and they come out twice a year. Is that what's going to happen with that?
That's going to get pushed back a little. That all depends if you have a frost boil in it right now. If it has a frost boil in it now, you probably will not be able to get your first application.
I don't, right in front of me, but I do on both ends for you to come to me.
Oh, no, you should be fine then, but I think we're still going to be about three to four weeks late on.
So they're not going to get your approval?
It's, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be late. It'll happen, but it's just going to be late. We're just strapped with trying to fix all these roads, and it takes extra time to go out there and get everybody's dust control ready.
Thank you.
I have one question. This truck driver that we're replacing, he's one of these four?
No, he's not. He's a, he drives a single axle truck, a small truck.
So he's, he's a different classification.
Gotcha.
Is that it?
Thank you, Kathy. I guess, yeah.
Okay. Good information. Like I said, all the counties are having problems around us. We saw it on the news over the last few weeks. And it's one of those years that we have to deal with it, with the overtime. There's also some years where you don't have that overtime and stuff. So you just have to deal with it until we get a five-year average on where we should be at. And I think they're improving a little bit. We're still having the rain, but you're also getting warmer temperatures. So I, I mean, we're going to get there eventually, and I know it's a hardship for the people that live out there. The only thing we can do is continue to do what we've been doing and, and do our best and go from there. So I was on a road up around Fredericksburg, fifteen miles on a gravel, and I didn't, there was nothing.
You've got several roads there.
Yeah, it was, there was a few soft spots. You just kind of go around them, but other than that, I didn't have any concerns. So, so it's depending on the area, I guess.
We have some roads that are hell.
Because I know Braver and Lynn County, you know, were the ones that were on TV, and they had some roads. So something we've got to deal with and move on.
I think they said there were like twenty-seven northern counties in Iowa that were the worst record for wettest ever. So unfortunately, but it's almost like then you're proposing kind of dealing with it on a year-by-year basis until we see, at least for a while, doing as we can to improve.
Yes, until we see long-term trends changing. I don't feel like we should be doing anything different.
So did we have anything close to this last year?
No, last year was great.
See, that's what I'm saying. We don't know from year to year.
Last year, we hauled our spot rock on some of the black spots, just for a couple of weeks, and we were-
I'm saying, we just have to kind of go with the year and go from there.
And we did have two mild winters.
Part of the big issue, though, is that frost line scenario, okay? You've got a mild winter. What that really means is that frost line doesn't go down very far. So if you've got just a spot over there, what's going to happen is that, that process of melt evaporation, transevaporation's going to happen a lot quicker in the snow ice deep. But that's the big issue over here. We call it the frost line. That's that freeze line, et cetera. But that's, that's the big problem they've got to deal with. So that's-
Drill a hole, Sharon, drill a hole.
And we've, we've had several residents that have said, you know, you need more rock, more rock on it. Well, you have to wait for these boils to dry out. Otherwise, we can shove all kinds of rock into it. It just keeps getting pushed down. So, you know, I could stick ten loads into a padded frost boil, or we can kind of ride it out, let it firm up, and cap it off with two.
Yeah. Okay, well, good information. We thank you, everybody, for that. Henry, reports from the board. Any information reports?
Yeah, I was just asked to share this by Jerry Thornsberg, who's Soil and Water Commissioner, but Sharon might want to add something to it, as he's a commissioner as well. But, but that the Blackhawk Soil and Water Conservation District is hosting eight-hundred-and-twenty fifth-grade students in, from the Waterloo Community Schools for a one-day Cedar Valley Enviro Fest on May fourteenth, that's tomorrow.
The day.
Or today, that's today, that's right. Yes. And this is happening at Hawkeye Community College, and the, I believe the goal of the program is just to kind of connect students with kind of real-life, you know, careers and, and opportunities in dealing with environmental issues. So Sharon, if you wanted to add something else to it?
It's a broad-based sort of thing. The Rock Club's there with Trollobites, the Scouts are there. There's all sorts of Iowa Rocks is there. That's the program out of Des Moines. So they're giving these youngsters an opportunity to interact, to do things, to listen, to learn over there. So.
Good.
Sands, hopefully, if we don't get too much rain, they ought to have a greater experience.
Very cool. Anybody else from the board?
I just had a couple of things, and it sounds like we had some dates already. The Urban County Coalition had, obviously, the legislative sessions ended, and they wanted to come up and present to all the boards and, and to those five counties, and have a date that maybe worked for the board members. I didn't know if there were some dates that you wanted to, to look at. They said something in May or June.
Who are you talking to? I haven't heard anything.
No, I think they just said at our last telephone conference meeting that they'd like to come up to the different counties and start doing that. So I'm-
I suppose they could come up any time. You're talking about Murphy?
Well, yes. And so I know Chris-
I'd say just avoid the twenty-eighth for, for Dan and the fourth for myself.
I mean, all right, we can schedule it after that fact.
Something in June.
Okay.
The other comment, I guess I'd just like to ask, and I don't, this is just because I don't know if any other board member wanted to do this. I would like to meet with Susan before she leaves in the next few days, just to kind of review some of the things that she's given us information on and provided to us. I think whether it was Country View Funds, or I think the Radio Fund, and just some of those things to keep us updated on. I think our reserves, I'd just like a recap of that information.
That's totally up to you.
And the, I know you mentioned the strategic planning initiative that was done about a year or so ago, and there were some things from that that maybe you were going to share with the board. So I-
You're going to do a lot of things in three days.
No, I just wanted to have a meeting, one meeting with her, and I just thought, too, I'd ask if other board members were interested, and then, you know, save time when everybody else has questions answered or not, too. I don't know if others are interested, so.
I, I'd like to, we're just paying someone like that.
Just get ahold of Susan, and she'll set up a time where you can sit down with her if it's convenient.
Does it, so, do you have any interest in doing something like that?
I do.
All right.
Just get ahold of her.
All right.
Make sure we run it more than two.
Well, I think I'd like to do a work session and just do it that way, then, if that's all right.
Yeah, we better, I don't know. We'll have to see about the work session. It may have to be more of a one-on-one.
Why? Don't want to dispute?
Well, it's kind of late of a schedule right now.
It's why, I'm sorry?
It's kind of late to be scheduling. You're talking about scheduling another meeting this week?
Well, I just, that's why I said I wanted to bring it to the board's attention, if we did something like that, and have to take the advantage of the opportunity before she left.
I don't know.
Well, I don't mean everybody had to attend. I just didn't-
Well, we certainly, if we're going to have a meeting, we want everybody here, just like Chris is going to be leaving. He wants to be here. Dan's going to be leaving. So if we can't have everybody here for the works, then it'd probably be best that you just get one or two, get with Susan, and go over whenever you want to.
Oh, well, fine. See what we can do.
Okay, anybody else? Craig?
No.
Motion is your second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Eric Jordan, thank you.